This meeting will come, workshop will come to order. Sorry. Could we have the roll call please?
Alderman Payne.
Here.
Alderman Malone.
Here.
Alderman Keith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
All right, if we could all stand for the prayer from Alderman Keith and the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Depew.
In the name of Jesus, dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, in only one we know how, asking you to please forgive us for all of our sins. Lord, we thank you, God, for your grace and your mercy. Father God, we thank you for all your wonderful blessings. Lord, I ask, in the name of Jesus, Lord, that you will continue to watch over each and every one of us, the balance of our families, keep us covered under your blood, Lord Jesus. And Father God, we lift up Mr. Fry's family to you, Father. God, you know what's going on, you know what is taking place. So, Lord Jesus, we ask right now, God, if you will just touch, Lord, work out, fix anything that needs to be fixed, heal anything that needs to be healed. For, Father God, we place everything in your hands. And, Lord Jesus, as we go through this meeting, we ask that you would guide us, direct us in the path you have us to go. Lord, every decision we make, Father God, Lord, we ask, Lord, that you bless it and that it will be pleasing unto you. And I will be so careful to give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise. In Jesus' holy name we pray. And everybody say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and able to govern justice forever.
All right, we'll go ahead and have our first session of public comments. Would anyone care to speak?
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. We have our first discussion, which is a little bit of a change that we had to make due to a necessity. But before we do that, I would like everyone to take a peek at one of the handouts you have. It is actually a page from our charter. It's page C-12. There has been a need to discuss Section 4. And we're just going to discuss, there's no action, it's just kind of a, just so everyone's on the same page. This is Section 4. It's from Article 3, Section 4. Powers vested in Board and Mayor and Alderman. The legislative and all other powers of the town, except as otherwise provided by this charter, are delegated to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. And the Board may, by ordinance or resolution not inconsistent with this charter, prescribe the manner in which any powers of the town shall be exercised, provide all means necessary or proper therefore, and do all things necessary within or without the town or state to protect the rights of the town. The Board, and this is very important, shall exercise its powers in session duly assembled, and no member or group of members thereof shall exercise or attempt to exercise the powers conferred upon the Board except through proceedings at a regular or called meeting of the Board. It is not our duty as Board members, or even the mayor, to make calls or demands upon department It's not a power that we've been given. It is not only not given to us, but there are punishments that can be exercised when that happens. So I just want everyone on the same page because in the past couple of weeks, there have been instances that have made this section necessary to be read again so that we're all on the same page. So, anyone has any questions? We can talk about it.
Well, just to be clear, if I call anybody, it's not to chit chat, okay? If I call somebody, it's going to be a good reason why I call.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay? So it's clear, ain't it? Because I don't call people just to chit chat.
Yes.
Are you referring to department heads?
I'm referring to whoever you want to think it is. If I'm going to call somebody, it's not going to be to chit chat. I don't like calling them telephone anyway. I don't do telephone. But if I call somebody, it'll be important, okay?
Yes. I just want all the Board members to know that Michelle is the interim Town Manager, and she is over the department heads. So should we have anything that we are concerned about, we need to take it to her. We do not go directly to department heads with demands or...
Not, not. I've never made a demand on anybody.
Not, not, I'm not stating that you have, but it is not our duty.
What demands have been made?
I know better.
Would you like to take this?
So there have been several instances in the past couple of months of Board members calling department heads, asking very specific questions, coming into employees' workspaces and keeping them from their jobs to talk about any number of things. So the reason that this is coming up is, over the past couple of weeks, we've had a couple of times where employees, whether department heads or employees, have been, have had to stop doing their job so that they can respond to conversation of any sort with a Board member. And it hasn't been for just short periods of time, not just a quick hello, how are you doing today? I'm talking full-on conversations that take them away from their prescribed work that they're doing. And 99% of the time, I don't know about it until after the fact. So when an employee is being taken away from their job, and then their job isn't getting done, that not only poses a problem for them, it poses a problem for the whole team. So we're trying to eliminate that situation.
Do you also have situations with emails and text messages that are coming in?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Have any of the other department heads had any issues that they would like to share? Any demands made on you through emails, texts?
Not any demands, but I will, I will speak on this. There is things that I feel like involved this Town Manager that as a department head, I think it's better business if it went through the Town Manager because it kind of puts department heads in a bad situation. It just, that's, I know, I speak for myself because I'm here. I want to serve and do the best I can for everybody up here, every Board member, but if the Town Manager is in place, it just makes things more easy, follow the charter, if that's a step forward.
And you're not referring to situations where if I have an issue and I need, I need police, police officers help? Okay, so we just want to make that clear. This is, this is, these are demands and things, items that are put on department heads' stuff.
Yeah, it just, in my opinion and experience of being here, it just creates any type of conflict going back and forth between a Town Manager or a department head.
Mm-hmm. I totally agree with you, Chief Depew. That's why I worked so hard so we could have a city manager. So some of the things that I have personally went through, I don't have to deal with it anymore. I don't have to deal with it anymore. So that's why I work hard, and that's why I'm glad that you're here. It makes my job and my life a lot easier because you know what I've gone through on this board. So I'm, that's one reason why I work so hard, wanting to have a Town Manager. It makes my life a little bit easier.
Yes.
Yeah. But I will keep it strictly business.
All right.
Well, I guess if it's a specific thing, we need to know because, I mean, I'm new, Carolyn's new, Eric's new, and I guess Michelle's new, and we don't know who it is. I mean, Eric was saying, we've got to get a tour of, like, for the, you know, I went there a couple of times just to look and just stop in a salt truck, you know, stuff which had a thing, it's a problem, so, you know, I wouldn't do any over plan of thing, but, you know, show me what it is so if I'm, you know, got a thing. And then Eric said, we need, I don't even know where the water plant is, the sewer plant, you know, the garage, you know, and stuff. And we, and so we either got to stop and do it, you know, and do it. And one day, you know, they asked, he said, I've got to go meet her, and I said, if you don't care, I'll ride with you and see what you do, you know? And he's doing a great job, and, you know, and the people and stuff. And I stopped and talked to Greg and Miss Day, you know, and just saying, you know, I want to help and I want to give them anything I can do and stuff. I don't want to do their job.
Right.
You know, I tell them, I knew him and I was Jamie, but the other eight officers, you know, I'd recognize their names and, but I couldn't even tell you who they are, you know, and I don't really want to know.
Right.
Right to me, you know, but still, and I want to try to help Michelle and Lori or anybody if anything I know and knowledge to pass on. I don't want to do their job and stuff on it. But, and I say, even if I'm stepping on toes or it's me and stuff, then I want to know so I won't do it, you know what I'm saying is? And so, you know, I try to pass as much as I can on, which I know Michelle is really busy, so I try to, you know, maybe look, I spend a little bit of time, get a little bit more time. We talk or whatever, but now it's what, 10 o'clock or something? I just thought of something, and I told her, no, sometime you get a, you get a couple meetings.
I ain't calling.
Well, I called her earlier, and she should call me like 10 or 10, said, too late to call you. I said, no, you know, it's fine. And I just, I observed something, so I just passed it on. So she, no, I said, I'm not going to involve in it, but I'm just passing information on to you.
Right.
And Lori and I, we made a stop the other day, you know, one of our vendors or stuff and stuff on it, and then she said, well, you know, I want to pass everything on to Michelle that we found out, say, first time. And basically, we just said, you know, you need to tell these people, you need to talk to Michelle, but, just passing, so we...
Yeah. And I, and I spoke to Michelle before we left to make sure she was aware.
Yeah.
I mean, to ask her if she was okay if we, if we did that, and she...
Well, I have never gone to the garage or come down here since I've been on the Board, talked to the Police Department or anybody.
Well, listen, so I mean, whoever.
Yeah, but if it is going to be specific, then let's get specific, let's put some names to it.
I try to make things...
They should not be emailing Michelle with demands.
Now, you're, did you say that to me then? Are you referring to me?
You asked me to be specific, I just wanted to be fair.
Well, I'm asking you, were you talking about me?
Yes.
I did not make demands. Did you take it that I made a demand?
Yes.
For demands.
Well, which one?
Shall I bring them up?
Sure.
Before I do that, I just want to clarify. If there is ever a time where a Board member wants to take a tour, wants to spend some time with employees, we are happy to do that, but please schedule it with me.
I discussed this with you.
Don't just, yes, we talked about it.
That I would like to, but I've got patience.
But please don't just show up to the garage and...
Well, I've never done that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, according to me, like, don't just show up to I and then say, hey, can you spend an hour driving me around? Yeah, no. Because we need to make sure that whatever work that he has scheduled for that point in time, he's able to get done. But we can absolutely schedule anything that Board members want to look at or get involved in at that point.
I do try to make things a little easier for people, and I don't want anybody to get in any trouble. And so I'll kind of say, well, I'm talking personally at my home, there was something that had lay there since October, and I didn't make an issue of it. And then there's been something that's been another week, and it's still there, and I don't want the people to get in trouble. So I did mention it to somebody, and they said that they would take care of it. But from now on, if somebody do something, I will report it, and I will keep everything strictly business. I like it that way, anyway. It'll make it easier for me. It'll make it easier for me because Lord knows what I've gone through. You know, I don't want nobody to get in trouble, and I don't want somebody to try to get me And I am very thankful once again that we got a city manager because that's what she's here for. That is what she's here for. And I had gotten a lot of calls today, Michelle, people complaining about their water bills and telling me what this board can do with those trash cans, what we can do with them, and I'm tired of hearing that. But anyway, and I told them that we have a city manager and they could speak with you, but I hear them, and I will continue to fight against these high water bills because the people picked me. I was voted in as board to represent the people, and that is exactly what I'm going to do.
And we did, I'm not sure if we talked about it at the last meeting, but where we had the issue with the water bills that didn't get sent out by the USPS last month, and everybody received their bills about two weeks later. We did forgive anything that would have resulted in a penalty or an increase on anybody's bills. So if anybody does get, somebody call them and say, hey, this happened to my bill and we missed it.
Okay.
You know, have them just call in and we will take care of that.
The calls I received, I told I'd checked down here, and they, and Michelle said that was, they would not be charged, not a late fee, not a reconnect fee, nothing.
And we do want to encourage citizens to call.
Oh, yeah, I have an open door with my supporters. They know that they can come to me.
Absolutely.
And they, and they know that with me as well, so...
Yeah, because they're the one that put the word.
I'm waiting.
Okay.
What date are we going to go to?
Well, this one's from January 29th. Respectively requesting that I provide certain updates at certain times.
No, now, now...
Hold on, hold on.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. But watch when your tone when you say that, because that, I could read it a totally different way.
So I'm just going to read.
Oh, read it, read it, but just inflection, leave that out.
So, let's see, here we go. The cold hard facts that we can dedicate, dedicate time looking forward to hiring a city manager, BMA wouldn't approve 92 facts. I don't even know where some of this stuff comes from. I believe you love the job, and this has been, this is challenged in years, but you can't take the job, and the max would be 65. This is just one of many.
Well, but, but now, when I ask you for the update...
You asked, you asked, and I'm telling.
I get some...
So there was put GPS tracking on police cars. So now we're getting into, let's find out about putting GPS tracking on police cars.
That is a suggestion for something in the future.
Make the suggestions to the Board is the point that I'm trying to make, and that's why we are talking about the Charter tonight, too. As Board members, you at meetings and in sessions, you get together, you bring up things that you want to discuss, you have them put on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, you can motion to add something to the agenda for the discussion that night. But the Board here determines what happens in the town, and then from the Board's decisions on everything, they come to the Town Manager, and I fulfill your actions. Whatever the Board decides, I fulfill them, whether I agree with it or not, it doesn't matter. I'm a neutral...
So then the emails that you send out and you want our input on? I mean, is that just something bogus, too? On the other one, on the updates, I did ask for every two weeks to get an update, and I merely stated with you, instead of you sending it to Lori, Lori's sending it to all of us, if you could send it to all the BMA at the same time.
She doesn't send it to me. I try to sit in every now and then on meetings when she's talking to the department heads.
But that doesn't catch everything that she's doing.
We don't need to know everything that she's doing if it's, if it's something that she's mentioned at a meeting or if there's no progress.
I'm talking about the new things from one month to the next month. I'm not talking about going back to previous meetings. I'm talking about as for this month, it would, like, January, it would have been, tomorrow night, we're going to get a month report in January, an entire month. If that had been once every two weeks, that would have been nicer. I don't see any problem with that.
The problem is with making the demands on Michelle.
You won't want to keep calling it demands. Okay, I will not. I will add, what did you say? I can add things to the meeting if it's not put on the agenda, which I'm having a really hard time with getting things on the agenda.
The item that you asked to be on the agenda was about the audio/video equipment, which was already...
No, not this one, no.
The manager?
I asked, in fact, it's on the video and the audio of our last meeting and at our workshop as well, that the workshop tonight was to be dedicated strictly our job description and a salary.
I left that off the agenda. It can be added on. An Alderman can make, or an Alderwoman can make a motion. It can be seconded, and then it can be discussed. I left it off because I knew time constraints, and there is a need, there is a great need to discuss the department, the Police Department's vehicles.
There is a great need that we discuss, the city manager, and getting the process started with MTS.
I made the determination with the help of the Town Manager and the Chief of Police that the situation going on now with the vehicles took precedence. Now, if you, if we have discussed everything on the workshop and you still would like to discuss the Town Manager position and salary, you can make a motion, it can be seconded, and we can discuss it.
Well, that's going to be something that's a little bit new, but I doubt that at this point in time that anybody would even have or brought the job descriptions with them. These things, some of these things require that we bring attachments with us.
If you brought attachments and you'd like to have them printed or copied, we can certainly give them to everyone.
I did not have my attachments tonight because I, this was...
Job description last workshop.
We didn't approve it. We said we were going to go over it.
It was a guideline. We can print that out if you, if you would like.
Let's just carry on with the meeting.
Are there any...
And I will, let's see, yeah, we'll bring it up. When, when does the motion come after everything else has been discussed?
It would be after the second discussion.
Citizens' comments?
Before citizens' comments.
Before citizens' comments?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
Like right now?
Oh.
Or before the second session?
Before the second set.
Okay.
We'll get the other items.
That's what I was thinking, that's why I ask it the way I ask it.
All right, if there are no other...
I think we'll do good as long as we all stay in our own lane. I think we'll do just fine.
Well, I believe, I am, I, I have made some suggestions, and if people think that as a Board member that I do not have the right to do that, then I will tell the entire Board that I just agree with that. I think the Board members have a right to make suggestions.
The Board members can make suggestions in a workshop, and that way...
I'm not saying in, just necessarily in a workshop.
Those things have to be done in front of the public.
Well, I think it's time for, I think it's time for the Board to sit down and also discuss some of the guidelines and some of the practices that have already been put in place by previous Board members. I mean, if this is the game that we're going to be playing down here now, then I'm fine, I'll go along with it. But I do believe that the Board members do have a right to contact Michelle and, and suggest some things. She can either, you know, maybe she doesn't like the idea.
The Charter says you do not have a right.
Pardon?
The way the Charter stated, that's not how it works. Like, it's not one person, Michelle doesn't work at the pleasure of a Board member, she works at the pleasure of the Board.
Of the Board, exactly.
Like, if we want to ask Michelle to do something, the Board has to make that decision. If you have a suggestion, you can bring it up to us in a meeting, because we can't buy like sunshine law. But what we...
Well, this is not...
Five individuals who are...
Violating any sunshine law.
Employees and other people in our...
I have made no request to employees.
I don't know what...
That's not accurate.
Saying that...
Uh, well...
It's not how we need to operate, is five individuals asking employees and staff to do things that we think that they should do. That's not how, that's not how city government works.
Okay.
But I mean, you can disagree with it.
I do disagree.
Oh.
That's what Board members do.
And Board members do not direct police officers to change signs.
No.
They don't...
Oh, no, 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 I did not ask for that. I asked, who did the signs? Let's get real clear with what I've done.
Did you want them to change it?
No, I didn't.
Did you ask them to change it?
No, sir.
This is sad. This is sad. Is this where we're at?
Well, I tell you what, to be accused of it...
And then like, I mean, this is, this is sad. We know, the mayor calls the meeting, we know the city manager works at the pleasure of the Board.
Yes.
We know nothing goes into effect unless the Board votes on it and it's approved. We know that. We stay in our own lane. You know, people can say this, that, that, or this, but you know where you belong at in your lane. And, you know, we can agree to disagree, but let's move forward. I mean, let's keep this business. If we don't, if somebody don't want us talking to them or whatsoever, fine, I'm good with that. I am good with that, I keep it business.
I do not like being accused of something that I know that I did not do. And that's pure and simple. I did not direct any police officers to change the sign. Did I?
You did make phone calls or questions, ask him why the sign wasn't changed and we should change it, and we knew we were responsible for changing it.
No, I did not say that.
Called him one or two times on his day off to try to get the sign changed.
A matter of fact.
So don't sit over and say you didn't do anything about the sign.
I did...
You wanted to request to figure out how the process works. You wanted that...
I did not know that the Police Department changed the signs.
I don't go to officers and tell them what to do and what to investigate. I don't go to maintenance and tell them what things they need to do. That's not how this Board, that's not how it's supposed to work. Like, we don't have five city managers up here that go around telling everybody else what to do.
Well, they, you know...
An idea, a suggestion, and you bring it up, and you need to discuss it, and if you all like it, we'll do it.
I will, and just as, just as soon as we...
We want.
Right before we get to the second session here, let's just move on.
All right, we're going to move on to the discussion. Overall needs of the Bluff City Police Department regarding vehicles, properly working vehicles or paramount, and officer's ability to preserve order in the town, protect the inhabitants and property owners there, and from violence, crime, and all criminal acts, prevent the commission of crime, violations of the law, and city ordinances, perform all general duties, and it provides essential protection in all situations. All right, we are going to have discussion now. If, do you, Michelle, Madam Town Manager or Chief, who would like to start? We've, we've had an issue that we need to bring to the Board.
So I'll, I'll kick it off, if that's all right? All right, so what's driving this is, just a few weeks ago, we were talking to the Police Department about a vehicle that they had that the front driver's seat was having an issue and it became unusable. And then, what was it, about mid-last week, we had a car that started having problems. It was stopping, and they couldn't get it to restart, and then they were able to get it to restart by adding some fluids to it, and then when Lieutenant Watson, or Captain Watson, excuse me, was driving the car, at one point it stopped on him. So that led us going into trying to figure out what was wrong with that car. That car has a water pump issue, it also has an issue with the transmission slipping and shifting hard. So that put us down a vehicle. Thankfully, we were able to overcome that by shifting some things around, but it puts us at a point right now where if we have one more issue with one more car, we'll have somebody that's completely down. So we don't have a backup right now because the backup would be, the seat that's a problem is out of commission, and now this car is too. So we're kind of at a, a critical point where we kind of need to decide what the best path is going forward. If we need to do something short-term to just kind of get us over the hump, if we want to try to look a little bit long-term. So put together some slides and some information, and you have a packet in front of you. We tried to look at every option to give you all the information that's out there so you can help us kind of figure out the best way that we should move forward with this situation. So for a brief overview, the Police Department has nine fleet vehicles currently. Five of the vehicles are in service with minimal issues, except for one has, has a couple small things. But then four of the vehicles need repairs and they have extensive mileage. I did have some conversations with other Town Managers in Sullivan County related to police cars and what kind of the industry stands. to police cars and what kind of the industry standard is for replacement, and typically it's between eighty and a hundred thousand miles is when you start looking at replacing them because the miles are hard miles. So it's not like you're a regular, everyday driver, these are, you know, these, these cars are worn and worn hard. Um, so just keep that in mind as we, we look at these next couple of things. So of the five cars that we have in service, and this is as of January twenty-seventh, um, we have the Chevy Tahoe that we just got is the twenty nineteen, seventy-four thousand miles, um, no issues with it. Assistant Chief's Chevy Tahoe has ninety-six thousand miles. Uh, Chief's Chevy Tahoe, twenty thirteen, has ninety-one thousand miles. And then we have the Ford F-150 with eighty thousand, and we have a twenty sixteen Ford Taurus that has lower miles on it, seventy thousand, but it does have a couple of items with it that we will need to take care of with the dome lights being out, the emergency light's not working, and there is a need to repair the windshield weather stripping. So, all very doable.
Tossed on that.
Um, I don't think we quoted that out yet, have we, Chief?
No, ma'am, not on, not on that, not on that vehicle.
Not on that one. So this is kinda where the hard conversation happens. With the four vehicles that are in need of repair, um, the twenty sixteen Ford Explorer with a hundred and twenty-one thousand miles, this is the one that has the water pump issue, um, has an issue with the timing chain, so transmission issues, um, and it needs some, it needs gaskets. Then we also have a twenty sixteen Ford Taurus with a hundred and thirty-three thousand miles, this is the one that has the driver's seat issue, um, and there's also a motor vibration. The twenty nineteen Ford Taurus with a hundred and twelve thousand miles needs an axle service. It just went for tune-up the other day for, um, cost the six hundred dollars, but, uh, we'll need to see what the axle service is gonna take. And then we have the twenty sixteen unmarked Ford Explorer, a hundred and three thousand miles, also needs a dome light, high beams aren't working, and in this one, we don't have a PD radio installed in it. Um, so far on the quotes that we've got, uh, the water pump right now is looking between two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars to get that repaired. The driver's seat, we got quoted at, uh, one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, of course, we did the tune-up on the other car for six hundred dollars. Um, so the costs that we already know are about forty-two hundred dollars, but there's a lot of work here that we still need to get quoted out. So the two, the two major cars that are in question here, the Ford Explorer, its current value, if you're looking on Kelly Blue Book, which is kinda iffy because it's not a regular car, it's a police car, um, but it's valued maybe around five thousand dollars, and the Ford Taurus is maybe around forty-five hundred dollars, give or take. Um, so one of the options we were proposing was to continue going forward with doing the repairs on these four, well, it's actually five vehicles. Um, and right now on our low end, we're looking at forty-two hundred dollars, but it's going to exceed that just based on, um, the other, the other things that need to get done. Of course, we don't have them quoted yet. Um, the other option we have is potentially replacing, um, these two vehicles that are out of service. Police department did find from Chicago Motors a twenty eighteen Dodge Durango, which you should have a packet, um, with some pictures of that one there. And also a board up here. It's the silver car. So this one's around twenty-five thousand dollars, has a little over thirty-one thousand The thing about this, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong here, this would require, um, fifteen thousand dollars of outfit.
Yeah.
So we could get it for twenty-five thousand, but it's gonna cost us forty, um, to get everything outfitted on it. Similarly, um, we also found this twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer, which is the black vehicle that you can see in your packet, same price, twenty-five thousand, has, um, almost forty-two thousand miles on it, and same thing, this one would need to be outfitted as well.
Same cost, fifteen thousand.
I say we fix the vehicles.
So I've got one more recommendation, bear with me.
Okay, I didn't see the picture.
Like I said, we, we're, we're trying to give you all the options.
Okay.
You can make a, a good choice here.
I just saw two pictures, that's all.
So we did get in touch with the dealership who sells the police Dodge Durangos, and they have a deal going on right now, um, where we could purchase five Dodge Durangos brand-new. They would come to us completely outfitted. Um, I've got the total costs up here, over a five-year period, you're talking two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, bear with me, I know, sticker shock. Um, again, just giving all the information.
Two hundred and seventy-eight thousand?
Two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred. Um, the breakdown of that would be annual payments of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten.
Pardon me, she has it on the board up there also.
I can't see that.
Oh, my apologies.
There's no way I can see that.
My, my apologies for interrupting.
Um, so that, that comes out to be thirteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars per car, per year, four or five years, completely outfitted. Um, the one good thing about this, um, as far as the payments are concerned, we wouldn't have to make our first payment for a year after delivery. So let's say they got delivered May first, we would have to pay it by May first of next year. Um, so that, I mean, that's important, if you decided to go this route, then you could just build it into your budget for...
Excuse me, how did you say before, I missed it?
Oh, I'm sorry, thirteen thousand, five hundred and two per car per year.
Is this a twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five?
The only thing that we would have to do is have, uh, the striping put on them, if they come completed with everything, just, just striping, and you're probably looking at, uh, around six hundred, six fifty for the striping.
So it comes with all the equipment needed?
Is this...
Lights?
When they show up here, they're, they're ready to roll.
They're twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
Are they twenty Fords or twenty Fives?
Twenty-five.
Twenty Fives. And I do have to make one correction, Vice Mayor, you asked me about, um, the, the outfit for, was it both of those cars from Chicago Motors was the outfit fifteen thousand?
It is fifteen thousand, 'cause neither car were completely stripped at Chicago Motors, they have no police equipment on them, from the practitioners, the lights, the whole nine yards, it needs it all.
Okay, sorry, I got confused with some information.
No, actually, you, actually, you got it right.
These used cars with mileage on them, and we can get brand spanking new ones for sixty.
And so the other thing too, um, we kind of broke down the vehicles that we have and what we would do with them or what we would recommend doing with them. You can see under the sell section here, there are highest mileage cars. Again, we'd have to look back, I think the one was about five thousand, forty-five hundred. Do you recall what the other two were?
Uh, which one?
The other two cars that we would sell. I mean, there, there's some potential that we could, we would get some money back from selling those vehicles. Um, but then we would also recommend keeping, um, the three Tahos, the one that we just got, Chiefs and Vice Chiefs, Deputy Chiefs, excuse me, and keeping the Ford F-150, which is what Lieutenant Smith uses for CID. And then the Ford Taurus that we have that needs minimum maintenance right now and only has seventy thousand miles, we would keep that as our pool car, our backup car, basically. Um, so we would have these five plus the five that we currently have, but we would sell for.
Can we buy these individually, do we have to buy all five?
Well, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
Well, you're looking at, uh, almost fifty-seven thousand dollars if you buy one, and if you break down the payments, one yearly payment, you're, you're coming out a little better going ahead and doing, doing the deal here, because here's...
So it's a deal for five?
It is.
Okay.
And here's one thing then, that, not what we spend, but what we project maybe next year, we will spend in just repairs and maintenance, and you're talking, you know, a lot of miles. So we don't know their machines are mechanical, they may not break down period, but we may end up with, uh, two, three thousand, four thousand dollars worth of damage or, or, you know, repairs to the cars throughout the year. So our cost in maintenance has went up, and I consider it to go up more, the more miles and stuffs on the car, and the dependability of the cars, and the liability of the cars. And I, and I'll say this too, and it's just something we is, in this room, have to discuss, there's liability issues. When you get in cars, it may be asked to go excess of a hundred mile an hour to an emergency call, and you're pushing a hundred, twenty, a hundred and ten, a hundred thousand miles, there is a little bit of concern of liability there.
What if, what if you happen to have one of these brand-new cars and your transmission goes, what happens?
It's under warranty.
Hmm, what if your engine blows?
It's under warranty.
Water pump?
How much more? It's under warranty.
Maybe you need a discount, maybe a twenty-five hundred, yeah.
Twenty-five hundred a year?
Yeah.
Discount.
So, so, looking back, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to get to speak to you all about this, but what we've spent in, in repairs, and if you look at what we've replaced last year, we probably spent close to eighty thousand or more, count replacing two cars and then maintenance on the car, and we're still sitting out here with cars over a hundred thousand miles on them.
And you're not talking about engine hours either?
No.
You're just showing mileage.
No, that's just mileage, yeah. That's where they have a lot of trouble with valve train, where they idle a lot when they sit and idle, 'cause they're in them sometimes, you know, ten, eleven hours a shift without it stopping.
So what warranties are on it?
Uh, the warranty you talked about? Yeah, it's, see, it's, it should be on them. It's like three years, three, three years, uh... The power train's got a five-year, hundred thousand miles, and, uh, the, uh, others are three-year, thirty-six thousand.
Um, when you sell, uh, police, police cars, what do you do with the equipment that's in?
What we did, like, on these here, we would have to strip them, or if we sell them to an agency or someone like that, we can sell the equipment with them, if it's to, like, another agency or say, if possible, if the proper paperwork's done and approved, we can, we can do that. But what we basically do is strip all that stuff and we put it on gut deals and sell the equipment and sell, and sell the car. Everything goes through gut deals, is how we've been doing it in the past.
I think, uh, you know, those two thousand sixteen's are nine years old, and I, I can't imagine what the idle hours are on, around.
Is that fifty-five thousand, six hundred, six thousand each?
Yeah. I've got a little higher blue book.
The two seventy-eight, three hundred?
Yeah, you know, I averaged them, and I, I, those four vehicles, if you average the blue book on them, you know, in, in okay shape, it came out to be about forty thousand dollars, which you won't get if you auction them off.
Right, right.
I've got a little higher blue book.
But, you know, however, the board chose to depart with them and get rid of them, that would be a few off, if you wanna auction them off, if you wanna have a bid on them, however, you all chose to do them. What we think, you all think you get the most out of it's what we can do.
When's the last time you guys had a new vehicle?
The last new vehicle that was purchased was in twenty twenty, and that was replacing a two thousand and eleven Dodge Durango that was involved in an accident totaled, and insurance replaced that. Outside of that, two thousand and nineteen, we had two Ford Explorers that we, we replaced brand-new.
In those Durangos, you know, the MBS systems, those are deleted for police officer cars?
Uh, yeah.
I thought so. MBS system worries me to death, you know, 'cause it drops those four cylinders and the gasket.
Yes, no, and, 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 why don't you say this to me? That's where in the past with the Dodge Chargers, when they first come out, they had all that issue with valve train, because they were doing that, so they fixed, yeah, they fixed the problem, yeah.
After the, um, five years up, and they just go back to the leasing company?
We own them.
Oh, we own them?
Per the city of Bluff Cities. So whatever payment you make...
So it's partial leases, I guess?
Yes, yes.
So there's no purchase price after that?
Yeah, it's an ask, yeah.
Thirteen thousand, five hundred and two thousand miles is...
Paying like, you need to replace a water pump and a gasket.
Your downtime is an issue then.
No, and, and right now, most agencies I'm speaking with, they're, they're going with the Dodge Chargers. Uh, the Highway Patrol, Bristol City just called a bunch, Elizabeth and Ballson, Car County Ballson, Johnson City just worked a bunch, so I get some good feedback.
The total altogether.
But these are Durangos?
Yes, yes, yes.
These are SUVs, not...
Yes, all-wheel drive.
There we go.
Bigger vehicle inside.
Hey Sharon, what are your thoughts budget-wise?
Oh, gosh.
I know, I'm hitting you with this.
Yeah, right now, I could tell you right now, I mean, uh...
Is it doable?
You get into the budget, yeah, I think. He's got the fifty...
I don't know how to, I'm gonna step it, I don't even mind.
Please.
But, uh, and I don't like to talk about numbers, 'cause we're about safety, we're about taking care of people, serving, protecting, all the things, but we have to have these conversations. And this is something a lot of people don't know, uh, things that we do, but every year, of course, you know, we project what we think we're gonna bring in revenue-wise, we have to do that. Uh, this year right now, as of December, from the start of budget, we're setting at two hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars current revenue just from citations. If we stay on this projection right here where we're headed, where we were budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand, we're gonna pop around four twenty-five, nine fourteen. I'm projecting, because I look at numbers, I'm, I mean, I get both sides of this, so I'm over there, I'm here, I'm saying a half a million. I'm saying we're probably gonna be, in my way, I calculate things to me, we're gonna be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars above projected budget on revenue on citations.
You're talking about private court or school and so forth?
School, what about...
Now, let me verify, is that the numbers I got from you Sharon, is that including driving school, or is that just citations only?
That was just...
That's only citations, that's not even driving school.
It's not.
'Cause I, I, it's just me, yeah, we projected twenty-four thousand dollars in driving school, and now we're done too, so my guess is it's gonna be forty thousand.
It is or more.
Might be a little more, a little less.
We, we, we are filling, we're filling two, two classes, twenty-five students monthly.
I don't know if that's a good thing.
And, 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 I mean, you have, you...
If what they're bringing in, what they're bringing in, it shouldn't really be too big of a...
Let's face it, you're bringing in the bread.
I mean, you know, we shouldn't have to say here and...
Yeah, and, and I wanna always add this up, I know we talk about money, but this just goes to show you the amount of traffic flow we're having. It shows you the amount of speed, and these speeds we're seeing, you know, it, it's, so we're still issuing a lot of warnings and we're being courteous and kind and trying to do the best we can, but this is the numbers based on the traffic and stuff we're seeing, and, and the stats I will share with you for January, I could not believe when I sat at my desk this morning because I didn't think I would come close to seeing that. And with the weather we had and the things we worked through this month, so I know this from being here, I know where things start to go as the, as the spring rolls in, summer rolls in, we explode, we do the summer heat stuff through the Governor's Highway Safety Office, we're involved in a lot of campaigns through them, I know what we're gonna be seeing based upon. So I'm confident in, I like having the three hundred and fifty thousand, 'cause we wanna be safe, but I would about stand before you when this budget's done, and I think I could feel confidence, and I, I told you, I felt we could get a half a million, it'd probably be a little more, but I'll say a half a million.
How much, or can you tell us how much we have taken with our drug association with Bristol and Kingsville?
I can, I can, I can, I've got those stats, I can't give you that exact amount, we just, I can share with you this.
Can you ball it?
We're, we're paying over the ninety, right at nine, nine thousand, nine hundred and some dollars a year and gaining money off of it. We, uh, we had like five thousand dollars in a drug fund a few weeks back, uh, and then I, I had a good meeting this, this, this past week, uh, there's almost three thousand more, uh, been approved, we approved to send out, and also there's some federal money of thirty thousand dollars that we will be a part of, uh, we should be getting some of that, so I look for a really busy year there, and I'm gonna tell you too, another thing, speaking of drug stuff, it's gonna pick up because the border, when they were driving fentanyl across or walking it across, they quit cooking it, uh, or meth, uh, and all drugs, but like meth, they, they were, they were bringing it across and being, you may even heard some of this coming, it's coming, cook labs are coming back, meth labs are coming back, it's gonna be a problem.
They're dangerous.
You're gonna see, it's coming back, because now, instead of it coming across the border as easy, they're gonna be cooking, and that's... the border as easy, they're going to be cooking and that's, that's property value to people, that's people in community and things of, those are things we got to really focus on and myself, DTF and everybody involved, we're looking at that, Mr. Stoppus, where it was addressed, we, we're looking at sending a guy to a meth school, probably Officer Smith, Lieutenant Smith. But, you know, it's getting busy, but numbers we see here, I just know sometimes maybe, I don't know if, if I've not been good enough about sharing some of these things with you all about what they're doing, but this is what we have from productive, aggressive, I'm going to get my cargo in service, which is 10-8, and I'm going to go out here and protect and serve the community and keep us safe. And this is what numbers we're seeing. And like I said, this isn't, I'm, thank you, this is not including driving school or any drug fund money and thanks for bringing up that.
What about, have we seized any cars that they're going to auction?
We have not seized any cars through our department at this point, we will some as years, I know, we can still do that, even though we're with the DTF doesn't mean our officers can't go out and seize money and seize cars and we are aggressively working on that through training, we've got an officer going through a really, really good drug school to help with seizures and things like that and we're trying to do some training and as the year goes on, I think we'll see more of that stuff as well.
So really, you guys bringing the money in for the cars anyway, so I don't see an issue with them getting what they need.
But the people with the road conditions out here might have a concern that we would vote for cars instead of fixing roads. I'm just throwing it out there.
I know, but we're going to do that too, hopefully, first things first, but they need their vehicles.
Obviously, they're standing for our roads, I mean, like if they're generating the revenue for their department, like it should go to their department.
They need their cars.
And if, you know.
What, what generates roads?
Uh, Greg, I mean, I guess I'm side thinking regarding, um, in the next few months or whatever, what other things are you going to need?
There would be things going forward in the budget.
We took a chunk right now and then next month we got a chunk, we got a chunk for one of them, so what's coming up?
Well, right now, when you're asking, of course, we're always going to need things, it's just part of it. Any police department in the country has to have things to function, we have to have them like cars, so if you want me to prioritize our things, we need number one, we can't function without cars. Now, will there be other needs we have? Sure.
Or lasers.
And I thank, thank you for the question because it's good because there is going to be some things that we need, but there's also plans and ways to get them through payment plans and things like this, like body cams, body cams, not only for the officer, you might have a bad officer out here. I want to know what that officer's doing, not saying we do, but if that officer's on body cam and things, we're watching him do and we're studying this.
No lawsuit.
It does and it keeps, you know, maybe some, it, it protects everybody, it protects the victim, it protects the officer, it keeps everybody in check, it helps us train, those are things that are not going to be an option in the future. So it's not what do we have to do, it is going to be like with tasers, those are things that we're going to have to have, like tasers.
Tasers.
So many times in my career, back in the old days, and I'm not real old, but back in the days when we had, when we had batons and we had a gun.
Two guns.
There you go. You, you had certain options you could do, so sometimes even like with a taser, it prevents things, it saves an officer from being hurt, from being out of work, it saves someone being hurt.
It saves them.
So those things are not just.
Criminals.
It's to protect everybody and make everybody safer and better.
Are you saying we need new tasers?
Yeah, those things will come and we're, we're staying ahead of the game, we're looking into things, we're researching stuff, we're getting numbers, we're doing all the right things to stay on top of it to make sure we're worried.
But all of our police officers have body cams, right?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am, they do and thank you because that's, like I said, that's, that's huge, it, it helps in so many ways because we sit down and we review them.
What about the vests?
We're, we have updated vest, we sure do and that's, that's, so there will be Jerry, to answer your question, there will be things as we go that are needed and required and have to have, but the biggest thing right now, this moment we're looking at, is fixing a problem and as we look how far ago it was when cars needed to be kind of cycled, if you start a good rotation, you start a plan and a program, then it fixes problems 10 years down the road. Other people won't be dealing with this 10 years from now because there'll be something set in place of how we're doing things.
You mean coming at behind this?
Yes ma'am.
Because I worry about buying five cars at a time because then that means you've got to replace five cars at a time.
Yeah, I understand that. And like with this here, you know, where you're just making that one payment a year, then when that five years up, the city owns them, so in five years, we looked at this, okay, city manager come to me and said, chief, tell me where you think in five years we're going to be miles on the cars and things like that, and we, we're looking in five years under 100,000. So you're going to be right where we need to be about in a five year and that's based off of 2019, we took the miles from it and that's where we're getting a pretty good judgment from. So I think in five years, you're going to be sitting with a pretty decent car, in pretty good shape, about 100,000 miles, you're probably going to be able to sell pretty, pretty decent to start replacing, yes, yes. And then, and then, but then you're set up where you can start doing that.
I do want to add to that for full disclosure, the other vehicles that we're keeping, so we're, this is basically half of our fleet.
Right.
And then we have the other half. So at some point, those others are going to have to be exchanged out.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To slide those in there because you've got two cars there and then the one that we just bought, that one should last for a good life.
Oh, that's great.
And what was the other with the F, the F-10? These are, these are still decent vehicles.
They're still really good vehicles and, and like.
And planned in, replace one at a time then?
Yes ma'am, and here, and here's what I'll say about those two, when you're dealing with the CID vehicle, the, the chief's vehicles, those vehicles are on the grind every day out doing things, I mean, they're in service and they're certainly being used, but they're not our patrol vehicle.
Yeah, I must think, I'm thinking about giving you that, one of these cars that Pierre, you trade your veh, you and Jamie trade your vehicles out.
Hey, I've got to say, I love my 2013, don't take.
I think maybe we might have to pull those two, but if things come to a crunch here.
But, but, but yeah, that, that, you know, the patrol vehicles is a concern right now, we've got ourselves where we're, we're okay right now, we can go for an extended period of time, but the patrol vehicles is why we're here tonight and the issue. And I think moving forward, in my opinion, what I've seen, looking at maintenance stuff that we do and expenses, I think we would probably save money.
I agree.
And, 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 you know, save money, you're saving money, you're giving the citizens something to be proud of, something they have, it's theirs that we use to protect and serve them, you're giving incentive, it's a retention thing, kind of these officers are really upbeat about a new car.
Do you have a program in place now with the patrol log, correct?
Yes.
And that's attractive for officers?
It is, retention and.
Yeah, but.
Got nice equipment you're going to wear.
The safety of the police officers that are working their bluff cities.
But you're going to also look at our public works department, their trucks out there are horrible.
All right. What does a malane dog?
Which has happened.
So if, this is, this is scary.
And Ms. Payne, I'd like to share this with you because I get, but this is a, and I think you picked up on it, a problem that kind of started sometime back and you may remember three years ago, I stood up here and was trying to stress the need, but, and, and that's why I, I appreciate so much having the opportunity to stand before you all tonight, answer your questions and explain some things to you and give you some details of where we're at and what we have.
Well, we have discussed the fact that your fleet needs to be done and, and to implement, next, do a car this year, do a car next year, do a car next year, we've got to put something in place for that.
Since you mentioned that Chief Dupew, you know, we've been here for a while and time that you had the work that you guys do and you bring the money in and the sad thing about it is you have to get up here and kind of keep asking for a car, always, always asking for a car and I don't see any problem, I really don't. I mean, you guys get out there, you work hard, we want you to be safe and we want you to take care of our citizens. What's the problem?
Can we get good money?
I totally agree without him having to get up here and really keep throwing it out there, we know you were.
We, we, we know where the money is coming in.
So what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do is talk to our attorney Paul Frye and ask him to draw up an ordinance and then put this for a vote tomorrow night for our first reading if everyone is in agreement.
And, and, and like the town manager talked about earlier, from the, there's no payment due until the day of delivery till the paperwork's signed, a year from then. And they're telling us.
How long will this deal last?
It's, it's the five years.
But I mean.
Oh, well, you know.
The offer.
Oh, yeah, it is till June.
This, this good deal.
Thank you, because the, the thing we have, it's, it's good up until June.
Oh, okay, so, so, okay, so this is not urgent.
Well, it is urgent, we have two cars that are down.
We have one car go down, then we have one less officer on patrol, but I think.
Well, we, we just, we just bought a car.
What's a delivery date on these if we do that?
Thank you, I had forgotten, that's what I was getting, want to talk about, it's from the time that we contact them and paperwork's, all that stuff's taken care of, it's eight weeks.
Eight?
Two months, yeah. So that's the reason you're saying May for this car?
Yeah, yeah, they say from the point we contact them, they can have them here equipped, eight weeks.
They do any trainings?
But I think, like I said, we could, we could probably do some good too on the, you know, getting the other ones, however the board chooses to do, you may want to sell them out however, be up to you all.
What, what can we get?
So we should probably take one of these that has niche repairs and get it on the road, figure out which one's the cheapest to get it back on the road so we have a backup vehicle until these new ones come in.
Yeah.
Probably the one with the seat, I think that's the.
The one with the seats cut quite a bit of miles on it and.
If you all want to get together and discuss that, bring that to us tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, we can still talk about it more tomorrow night.
Get that back on the road.
Yeah.
That one's got a, yeah, that one's got 133,000 miles on it.
Right.
Fixing the one with the water pump, we're looking at a little more.
Yeah, yeah, that, that one, and I, and I will say this to you, the estimate that was brought was the cheapest one, there were two others that were right at $5,000, so I, so I was hoping when he got into it, it didn't turn out to be more than what we were getting, but that was the lowest estimate, was 2,500, the other two were right at 5,000. So.
All right, so.
That was a bad phone call to make on that.
I wouldn't mind seeing a, a list of what you think you might have to replace taser wise.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, the tasers.
Yes.
Wait.
Yeah.
We're kind of asking.
We'll need that at budget time too.
Well, but I, I, yeah, but now that we're talking about that, I know budget is coming up, but.
Tasers.
You get a taser and you get a taser.
I'll get tasers.
Budgets.
We've actually had several meetings and kind of based myself with Axon and we've talked with their body cameras and their tasers and the ones that work together, they're, we have those quotes together, so we're ready to bring them to the board soon, but this is a little more important, but we have those together, the timing is good because I think our taser is what is May, end of support, so yeah, we've, we've got that information that's coming and they're the same ones that Sullivan County just purchased.
And they're thrilled with them.
If that could be maybe added, if we're going to put it on the agenda tomorrow night, have those to add, to add that, the cams and the other to where, we know we're getting close to the budget, but at least we would know what he's almost finished with for, for the budget when it comes to 2025.
If the board wants to have us there tomorrow.
I bring it, because that way we would actually see him all the way through June 30th.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
I could bring it up for us.
Yeah.
Do you all want to include this tomorrow night on the agenda that he presents the, the body cams and the lasers, not for a vote, but for a discussion, do, will we know how many he needs and the price on that?
I will, and I.
And the end of life on all of those?
Yes.
If there's an end of life on any of those.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say this too, because he's in here and Lieutenant Bayes, thank you, this guy has done an outstanding job and I don't say a lot about these guys individually at times, but what the work he's done, working with Michelle on the Zoom calls, the meetings, how long have you been working on this stuff?
Seven months.
Seven months, and I mean, he is just detailed with things he's done, so thank you.
Thank you.
But, you know, so.
We can either do that or we're going to have to have a second reading. It, I know that the meeting tomorrow night is looking pretty long, but we can, we can absolutely put that on there.
Well, we're going to start having our budget meetings, didn't, didn't we say in March? This will almost complete him out and with the cars and the lasers, no, I'm serious, don't come back anymore. Don't you come back in here anymore, I'm serious.
You don't know him very well, do you?
Well, to, to, at least it will give us a good idea as that, what we're going to start with in 2025.
Yes.
And, and, and it's kind, then it's kind of like we got you off the plate, you know, don't come back.
Quick brief during the report is tomorrow, it probably doesn't have, be anything time continuing, but we can.
Yeah, it's just, it's just discussing it and letting the public know, it's not for discussion and action, it's just an update to where we don't scare the bejesus out of them tomorrow night.
Yeah.
No, we're going to get, we're going to get.
Well, I know we are.
I hear you, pal, we're going to hear it.
But, but, but then, and, and as Michelle says, it's coming up, we have got now to look at public, our public trucks, public work trucks, because they're, they're in horrible shape.
You know, while you guys throwing all that out there, this is a workshop so we can discuss things, so while you guys are throwing this out there, you know what I stand for, we've got to start thinking about some ways to help our citizens on these water bills.
Yes.
I, on my way home to the meeting, it was a couple and they were upset about, they got their bill and I said, well, hang in there, I said, it'll get better, we've just got to keep working, that encouraged them, so we've got to come up with something, let's not forget the people.
We got, with that and also the roads.
We're not giving them anything.
Those and the roads.
Yeah, but right now I think they're concerned about paying that water bill.
Well, yeah, but.
On the roads to get the water.
I get the water bills.
Yeah, but they're, they're both problems.
I'm getting both, I'm getting both.
I hear both.
Discussion, darling, not with the roads.
Yes, let's get, let's move on to that one then. No, that's actually up, up next versus Tennessee.
It was, it was $10 more last month and I'm gone most of the time, I am gone most of the time.
Oh, you're just hiding a bathroom.
No, 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 I'm at the 10 and 128, thank God I can pay my water bill, but there's other people that can't and even though I may be able to pay it, I don't want to spend my money on that, you know, so that's the concern that we have is these water bills. I mean, we've got to do something or either hang it up, I mean, it's got to be something, we can't just keep giving them increases, especially when we didn't have to.
We could take the seat out at one, two 16 tours and put it over the other one, it just got a motor vibration, so.
Then, when it says motor vibration, you might as well hang it up. That's, that's almost like taking it to a mechanic and saying, I've got an intermittent problem.
It was never more than 120.
Just if you'll bring that, what, kind of like your little needs wishlist tomorrow night.
We'll have it ready, be very prepared for you. We'll have it ready. Be very prepared for you.
Christmas holiday when all my boys were home. One time, and they were taking 20, 30 minute showers.
Thank you all, Mayor, Board members. Thank you, City Manager. We've worked hard on it. Thank you for everything, Sharon. Thank you for your help getting stuff together for it, too. I appreciate it. And we'll keep working hard, trying to make you proud every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say this to Chief Black, the revenue you're bringing in is fantastic, but you got to turn this into Jonesboro.
Yeah.
I mean. I don't go there. In the last two tickets that I've gotten have been in Jonesboro, so I just like, I don't have to go there and work anymore, so I'm like, I ain't going back.
You'd be one over in the game.
What's the deal in Jonesboro?
Oh.
Three over, five over.
Go by the ridges. It goes from 55 to 45 to 35 to 20, back to 45, back to 35, like all in. Like two miles.
Okay, let's move around on that.
Yeah, last time I got pulled over, I was going four over the speed limit.
Four?
I was like, bring me the radar, dude. I want to see. And he brought me the radar, and I was like, four over? Four over? It's like on my way to court, and he's like, well, you can pay the ticket when you get there, and I'm like. Eight o'clock in the morning.
Too late, too late. Get ten cars.
They're crazy.
All right, so we're going to go ahead, and we're going to have an ordinance ready for tomorrow night for the first reading. And then we will have the presentation that you will give, and we can do that with distinguished. Or you can do it in your report if you'd rather.
Something I think will make everybody really proud of one of our officers. So it's a bell of beans, you know, tomorrow. I think you'll be very excited and proud.
All righty. Okay, on to our next item discussion. First Tennessee Development District Meeting. Representatives Cory Haggard and Connor Franklin will be attending the regular board meeting tomorrow night. As you all know, we are no longer participating, we don't have a contract anymore with First Tennessee Development District. So they reached out to both me and Michelle, Michelle and me, and they wanted to have a meeting. So we had a meeting. It was a very productive meeting. We were discouraged that we weren't currently working with them, and the contract had been severed. But they want to work with us again, and they are going to come tomorrow night and give us a presentation. They're excited to want to work with us again, and I felt it was a really good, it was a short meeting. But as you all saw, contracts were sent to you if we were to go back in with them. There is a contract from now until July, and then from July for the following year. But have questions for them tomorrow night? They'll be here to answer anything, but if you have any questions now about our meeting, and Sharon sat in on the meeting as well. It was a short meeting, but it was basically them saying, we want to help you. We can get you grants. We can do all these wonderful things. We'll write the grant. We'll run your planning meetings. We'll do all of that.
And we went with them.
No, and in fact, I asked them some very point blank questions of things that were currently going on. One of them being roads, different roads. We talked about, what is that, Parks Warley? We talked about some other roads that have come up in discussion. We asked them about help with water and sewer, and they talked about different grants that we can get. I mean.
That we just missed.
Very specific questions for Bluff City and how they can help us, and they had on responses for each one.
So they can help with the roads and with grant money.
Yes.
And all kinds of grant money, even administrative grant money.
Sharon, you would know that. How many years?
A long time, yes, when I would come here.
I did catch you in there at the substation, so the planning and signing.
They helped us get grant money to fix roads. They helped us get grant money to.
We still need to, of course, I guess.
Oh, I can get this fixed for you. Yeah, absolutely.
But we do need.
Sharon, you know what the top of your.
It's hard, but I mean, if they're getting us grant money for, you know, and I mean, that's where the grant process is and kind of again, that's understand. If we don't have.
We do have two coming up with grant money for roads.
That's what First Tennessee Development does.
Right.
But we used to be with them, so it wasn't. We used to be with them.
Yes, we were. We had a contract with them. It was terminated.
You know, that was one of the.
I want to know what the plan.
Sort of get the conversation going to. Discussion behind over here.
We need to speak louder so everyone can hear. Sorry, Jerry wasn't able to hear.
Yeah, I mean.
When we did have the contract with them, you know, what we actually got out of it, you know? I'd like the reassurance that, you know, little Bluff City don't get on, put on the back burner behind Johnson City.
Right.
You know?
Oh, and we did ask about that, too, and they were more than happy to provide us a history up until the point where the contract was severed of things that they've done with us. So I don't know if that's going to be in their report tomorrow, but we did bring it up as.
I can reach out to them.
We would like that information provided to the board.
Because I remember in previous years, they did help us. I remember that.
How do we stand on the GSI? We already have a contract, don't we? We're going to get a fund.
Okay, so everyone come with your questions tomorrow night. I will reach out to Cory and let him know that we would like to help with all of the, if I could. Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm talking over everybody. I'll come with your questions, but I will also ask them to bring a list of things that they've done for us. Okay. Does anyone else have any, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add to that discussion?
Kind of, I guess you said you asked them stuff, too. Colly, I dealt back with them, I mean, some stuff back in the 80s or 90s, I guess, on it with them. And it didn't really help me any, but they gave me a lot of advice. You know, I mean, per se, I was looking for money for Fire Hall and different projects and stuff, you know, in general. And they were the planning commission, and basically I was John City for this area, you know? It was the district stuff, so I mean, they helped, they got a lot of committees, and they got a lot of smart people on there. Lori is listed on the board for thing, along with every other mayor, John City, Bristol, Kingsport, and stuff on there. I don't know if we don't join, if they might drop her off. I did look back on some of the minutes up until Jeff done, and he was on the board. I mean, as, you know, one of the members or.
Which one?
Or member, First Tennessee.
Oh.
I don't know if that's accurate.
I don't think it.
Many, got the minutes, you said to us, just look back at August and stuff, you know, back until he done it. He was already voted to different stuff, second motion and stuff. That's why I was looking back, so he was on there. Is, but when he decided he didn't want to be on no more, and of course, it's severed, his name went on the later minutes.
He removed us.
To offer the meeting, so he went, I guess he was present at the meeting, so he was our, you know, on his list of honorable, blah, blah, blah. Now it's said honorable Lori Staton, so, and the question is, if we don't join, are you still on that board? You know, it would make.
I seriously doubt it.
Well, I do, too, and I'm just saying, because it says in their thing, probably the ever city mayor, you know, in their district, is probably on there and stuff.
Kind of like networks.
Now, like Cory and the other guy, they divide them up, you know, each one's got seven or eight towns. So it's kind of like whoever hollers and pushes, it's creepy. We'll get the creeps, you know what I mean? Because Segors was on there, you know, and a lot of places similarize and stuff, too. And Johnson City, being where their office is and stuff, and they got a lot of stuff going on, got a lot of people. I'm sure they push a lot, and, you know, Kingsport and Bristol, so they get, you know, a lot of stuff. So, you know, we need to, you know, find out, you know, like I say, for instance, like grants. You know, Michelle probably can't sit on 10 committees, but they might let somebody, board member or representative, to actually work with their committee on grants, you know? Because if you're out there, the ones who's out there, you know what they ask you, you know what I mean? And that's what Jeff said. He said, you know, he said a lot of it, you know, his excuse was, I guess, or saying, you know, he went out and he knew where a lot of stuff was coming from, and to get it, like the Main Street project or the Carter Street project or whatever, you know?
They have assured us that they're going to be proactive with grants.
Well, and like I say, if we, Michelle, we push, Michelle, Michelle pushes them, this is what we need, and she gets, you know what I mean?
Not believe Michelle will. Push hard.
They helped do something for us, and we gave the contract.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
There you go.
You give the 90 day notice, but what I'm saying is, if we can do, we can pay them the money and forget about it, I mean, don't say anything to them, and they're not going to do anything for us much.
You gotta ask for it. You gotta ask for it. And.
Truly, this can be a question.
And there, I did ask, because it's in here. Mayor, because it's in here, it's the GIS, but, and I talked just briefly with Michelle over here. Do we not have another company that's doing the GIS?
Yes, we'll have an update on that tomorrow.
And.
And they will work with them.
Okay.
Yeah, they will.
We did ask that.
All right, well, because it was in here, I did want to specifically ask about that, so. And we've not had an update on that GIS in a long time, so we do need an update. Do what?
We'll have one tomorrow. Trying to think if there was anything else that we specifically talked to them about. I know they did say that.
Parks, things like that, for, like the boardwalk, the boardwalk, that's always.
Like recreation.
Recreation.
Yeah.
There are so many grants, to do something with our fall field slash lake area.
And crosswalks. We talked about crosswalks.
Crosswalks. Don't go to the tap house if you're not wearing reflective clothing.
Well, it's like that sidewalk we're supposed to be getting down here, and I'd say just get rid of that and pull our money back from that and say no on that one, and start doing some of these other little things or $40,000 on streets or something.
Just to remind you, the multimodal grant has been going on.
Forever.
Three or four years, so if we cancel it out and start one all over again, it's going to be three or four years.
Forever.
So.
But the other thing we need to think about is tourism. We're getting restaurants and all those, and we want our community to be accessible. We want it to be accessible for people who are coming. There's just been approval for the gentleman who, he currently owns Cootie Browns, Mr. Anthony Bella. He has property, a beautiful home. Jerry and I went by and looked at it. It's beautiful. Jerry was on the fence about that, but on Sandbar Road.
You have to quit riding with her. You're aggravating her.
He's going to be bringing in people from corporate businesses to do business meetings and to have, you know, getaways. And he wants people to come in, and when they come here to go to Sandbar, they're going to go one of two ways. And if they go through Bluff City, they might want to stop.
Exactly.
There'd be way of him retort it.
Yes, yes. That, well, it's done deal, though. It's a done deal. He got the approval.
Really?
Yes, yes.
The council, oh, we're done, though.
Yes. Yes. Poor Luke need. Anyway, okay, so that one is going to be tomorrow. We'll be able to talk with them. Does anyone want to say anything or ask anything before we do the second set of public comments?
Yes, this is my time to get things on the agenda. I do want a workshop to where we sit down and we just, and so only two things on there is our job description and salary for a city manager.
Okay, so you were wanting a workshop just for those. Are you making?
Well, that's what we were supposed to do tonight, so.
It was. Are you asking to do that now? Are you making a motion to?
No, I'm not asking to do that now. I'm just, these are, can I make a motion for suggestions or can I just speak?
Sure.
Okay, the audio and video, where are we at on that?
So we did look at the audio, yeah.
I'm sorry. Is that in your report for tomorrow night?
There is some information in the report for tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
Related to.
Alderman Panett, would you like to hear it now, or would you like to wait until tomorrow night?
I'd like to hear it now.
Okay, so pertaining to like the mics for the DAS, did some investigation. We would actually, for nine people, we need five more mics to outfit everybody. There is only one connection, and it's between Vice Mayor Adams and Alderman Johnson. There's one connection for a mic available right there, so to add the additional four, we would have to run four more cables. I still have to figure out where we can get those four cables and if we have enough room in the conduits to pull them through. So more to come on that, but we can get mics. We just have to figure out.
Let me say something, too, and I don't know a lot about nothing, but I took all the numbers on the stuff we got over our, you know, the PA and whatever and so forth. And, and it said that that was four receivers. And what I'm thinking is, is we got four mics, and it may only take four mics. I don't know.
There used to be a fifth one. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. There was a fifth one over there, but it got damaged.
I was going to say coming off of there or whatever.
No, there was a fifth one there next to Vice Mayor Adams.
I don't know.
But it got damaged. It doesn't.
So I don't know, I should say you might be able to put in mics. I don't know.
But we're not buying the $2,500 packet, right?
No, no, the ones that you and I had discussed a week or so ago.
About 100 and.
They, they work for here, yeah.
Okay, they, they pretty much like what we've got.
That system will take four or five or.
Ben said, Ben said he would help us out with that. Ben, Ben's the guru on that one.
Sound for years, so, yeah.
If I may ask a question, what's wrong with these?
We just need more. We're not getting anything.
We're not going to get rid of these, though, right?
No, we're just getting everybody.
Don't mess with this one now.
Carol, we're just getting. Carol, we're just trying to get a microphone for everybody.
For everybody, okay.
Yes.
I'm willing to share.
Well, that's just it. Nobody shares, and the people can't hear them. My biggest concern is making the audio and the video work together. Where are we at on that?
That's a different story. Having those two systems connect together would take a lot more because they're totally separate. So you have the mixer and everything for the audio, and then you have everything that's for the video, and they, they don't connect. If we were going to make them connect.
You'd have to start a new system. You wouldn't be able to.
But could you, could you go with one system, the audio, and get something that's compatible with it? Or get something that's compatible with this up here? I'm assuming this is the audio.
This is all your audio control over here.
And the video is back there in the room or where?
Yes, but it handles all of your video.
Right, including the cameras for the police department and everything, correct?
Correct.
So that's a big thing. That's a big deal. Well, how much would to either, could we make, buy something to go with this? Or buy something to go with this to where it's super easy, and what would be the cost?
So I'm not an expert on this, but in my experience, when you buy a single system like that, it's quite expensive. You don't typically get separate audio/video systems for something like this.
No, it's.
Not that it can't be done.
You'd have, like, if you contacted somebody to come in here and say, I want to set up audio and video, they're not going to even consider the CC cameras that we have outfitted through the building.
No, we talk, the cameras are separate.
Camera over there, one camera over there. We're going to, you know, build the mix, whatever mix you want up here. You're talking probably $25,000.
I know they don't match, you know, I know the audio and the video doesn't match. But if we have the good quality audio, what does it matter if it doesn't match?
It doesn't.
I'm not putting it up on TV to watch. I'm putting it up there to hear what people say.
Right now, the audio is horrible.
I agree.
So, I mean, that one, so that, yeah.
We have a microphone front of you.
You can hear people. That's fine.
So if we had other mics, would it really matter if the video didn't match?
That's not as much as, tell them how hard it is until you learned how to marry the system and make the system work together.
I mean, it takes a minute. So I use CapCut. It's just a mixer, you know, digital mixer. You have to pull in the video and pull in the audio, and simply just finding the two points that match, and usually it's that hit of that gavel. Okay, I heard it in the audio, and getting that to line up, and then cutting out the before and the after, and then just listening to it to make sure that transition is smooth. Getting better at it. Took me a little while there in the beginning to figure it out, but.
But have you trained somebody else on it?
Not yet, haven't had.
That is, that is a necessity.
Not a requirement.
That means overtime.
So at this point, I think it's safe to say microphones are a good idea, but for the cost, the status quo is probably acceptable going forward.
Before we spend a whole bunch of money on a brand new system that'll match.
Yeah, we agreed on that. Microphones separate.
So we're just going to put a pin in the discussion for audio/video, and we're just going to go microphones.
I'd rather not sing, I said.
No, you need to know. You need, you need cameras, process cameras.
That's up to the board, and I'll do whatever.
What about the cameras? I mean, did we poo-poo the cameras then?
The security cameras or cameras to catch what's going on?
The security cameras that we need in the building.
Is there, is there a necessity right now for security cameras?
So, so, yes, there is, and now we had taken that quote based on our last discussion with the board back to that company and said, can you add audio to it? We haven't gotten an updated quote back. But we still have that original quote to do the exterior and interior and interior cameras. So if the board would like me to move forward with that, it was about $6,050 to capture everything, but that did not include anything mixed with the audio in here. It was just video.
And that's going to make that price jump.
It would, but that price also included all new cable. It would, but that price also included all new cabling, and included a new central station unit, it was everything for those.
Where outside is not covered, I know you said there's a couple of places, one or two places.
This whole back corner over here.
The garbage, or our storage building and-
So we have, the building is covered, but the exterior, this whole exterior part of the building is not covered. We're covered over here, we're covered up front, but you don't catch sides.
We should probably maybe not discuss it.
I know.
It's like no problem.
Let's do that as a one-on-one.
I'll just say, we're not 100%.
Well, you said it's a drive-through, so it means-
You break in over here, and you won't have an opinion.
Would you bring-
Police are here and watching.
Would you bring that quote tomorrow, and present that on your, in your part?
On our money for the building, you know, $60,000 of the thing.
It was only 50.
Well, 50, 60, whatever, I think. Well, I guess we paid off 68,000, maybe that's what I'm thinking of, but anyway, we're not going to put a roof on this year, and-
Can save this money.
We're going to have to figure out about the heating and air, and it may have to be next year, but that, the security stuff would be out of the building, so.
Presumably.
It could be.
He's asking if the video system would come out of those, the building funds, the same one that had the roof funds in it?
Yes. Well, yes, she could.
I mean, it's part of the structure.
We have an outstanding-
We would just get quite a bit of money in our budget, because we had money set aside for the roof, right?
Well-
And we're not using that money, so that money is still there in the budget, so it's still got, and it's paid off, so we've got quite a bit of money in there to be able to maneuver.
To certainly, if we replace all that, it's going to be-
And we did have a company come out last week to do an inspection of everything, so we're expecting to get some quotes back from them soon. So we might have an idea of what that'll look like here, maybe in a couple weeks.
All right. I think a lot of this is really going to be, we're going to dig down in the budget and be able to really be effective, yeah. All right, any other questions?
I have a question, Mayor, it's okay. You know, how do I put this? You know, I always try to help people and try to get things solved before it gets out, out there, you know what I mean? So if a citizen has a complaint about something, and it could probably be resolved with just a simple, talk to somebody about it, is it better now, because I want to do things right, come to you with it? And let you take care of it?
Absolutely.
Okay? Or if, you know, and you will take care of all complaints. I mean, all complaints.
If anybody emails through the webpage, it comes to me, and we respond to those. They're welcome to call in. If I'm not available, they can leave a message.
Okay, because there was a citizen over the weekend that's been having some problems, and I think they got some, quite a bit of video, and it's very interesting. So, so now, I'm just going to tell the person to talk to you about it. Okay? So, okay. That makes it easier on all of us.
But we can be advocates, too.
Oh, I am an advocate, honey. Ask Ben, he knows all about that.
This isn't us no, no longer being able to voice for the citizens.
No, no. One thing about me, Mayor, I will give you to stand up and speak, because we got this right. I will stand up for the people, you know, and I won't be muzzled, okay?
I won't muzzle you.
I wouldn't let you.
I had to go use, I had to go to the party, but I had one more. Will we start putting the regular meetings on the billboard out there?
Um, I mean, we can put tomorrow's meeting on the board.
I know. If you want me to take it to you.
I think we can wait till tomorrow morning to do that.
I mean, people, they, they look for it, so, even though it's a regular meeting, we say it's in our charter, do you know how many people down here do not read our charter? They don't really understand, we have a meeting the first Tuesday of every month. They rely on that billboard out there. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Since we brought billboards or signage up, curious, at some point in time, maybe we can add it to another workshop, just as a short topic, how y'all think of a digital signage?
Digital signs, y'all, come on now.
Let me tell you.
There's a catch to that, though.
There is no, no, no more money, we can't, I'm bled out on money tonight.
What if, like, you did it without a money issue?
Oh, yeah.
Well, let me say, there is things like, on things like that, if we, if the board ever chose to go that route, with drug-fed money, like, if we use say no to drugs or something like that, some slogans across it, we could use, so.
Well, bring it on, baby.
All right.
What I tell you about our city manager, she's got it in the road.
You get it for free. Good way to go, girl.
But we could get it without maybe Sharon losing her hair.
Well, I mean, you're making me nervous up here with all this talking money.
So if we could maybe-
I'm finished, but I, I mean, I did want to get those things that I wanted to say.
The, the Rutherford Moss, it's going to be presented tomorrow.
It's one more thing.
Yeah. All right, for anyone who didn't hear, the audit, Curtis.
Redford.
Curtis is going to be here tomorrow night.
Oh, yes.
Correct. Yes, to present the Rutherford Moss.
We get a copy of that draft on the audit for board members?
Yes. I got the final one today, and I'm going to forward that to you all, yes.
Okay.
Can you print it off for the meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
I'd like to have-
Yeah, and there's a chance that-
Can you, can, can you send, yeah, can you send it before?
Absolutely. We'll definitely have it in front of us.
He'll bring the, he'll bring them tomorrow or not.
Yes, he will furnish one for everybody.
Well, can, can you send a copy, do you have, do you have a copy of it already?
I received a copy.
Can you send it as an attachment?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Send it to all the board members.
Right, right. And one more thing is going to make Chief real unhappy with these new vehicles and stuff, and I do know Public Works is up next. I do want us to think about putting GPS systems on our vehicles, just throwing it out there for conversation, because I think-
Don't you already have something?
Well, I'll say this to you.
Watson, I saw.
What we, Watson do, we are tracked by our recording, but GPS on, for design for dispatching, not tracking. Because here's what I said, the day that-
Well-
Let me say some real quick. The day that the board feels they don't trust me to be your chief, or trust me to have people out there, you've got a bigger problem than GPS trackers.
Well, you said dispatching, what, how does that work? Well, how does dispatching work, though?
Dispatch has to say, this car's the closest to that point, so you send them there.
Yeah.
Well, you said it in the same tone, and I thought, what, what is, are they one in the same, or?